Mr. Your Honor.
A call to order the joint meeting of the Anchorage Assembly and the Anchorage School Board. Welcome, everybody. We'll do the roll. Usually, we do ours and you do yours.
Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Constance. I know he's out of town. Mr. Dyson.
Here.
Mr. Trainey.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. LaFranz.
Here.
Ms. Quinn Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Weddleton. Mr. W- Ms. Wimpoff, I'm sorry.
Here.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Marsette.
Here.
Ms. Hildy.
Here.
Mr. Foster. Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Ms. Snelling.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell. And Mr. Holliday.
Present.
Uh, we normally do, um, the pledge. Mr. Donnelly, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Chairman. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
We have a packed agenda. I hope this was starting just a little late. Some of the items we may, um, combine just for ease of discussion. You wanted to do that, Mr. Dunbar?
Yeah, although I thought we were going to take it as Mr. Dyson first.
Yeah, we can do that anywhere. Mr. Dyson has drafted. Is it, is it in sort of ledge drafting or just in handwritten form now?
Yes. I'm just trying to have.
Oh, good, there it is. Okay, so we'll, um, Mr. Dyson isn't feeling well, so we will address that first before 4A. And then.
Yeah, and then I would like to make a motion to combine discussion of 4H with 4A. I'd like to move that on the agenda.
Everybody okay?
You don't need to crank the game down.
What they say to you.
Yeah, I'll call him this year.
You guys didn't react very quickly. Okay, so any objection to addressing the resolution, um, from Mr. Dyson and then combining the discussion of A and H? If not, that's what we will do. Um, Mr. Dyson, what have you drafted here?
Yeah. We're short of revenue. And there's a couple of three things that I think, rationally, mean to support the idea that Anchorage ought to get more state support. And that we ought to have an option for crisis times like this. So, all, what this does is ask for an investigation to see if there's a way we can raise the local contribution limit, uh, so that we could tax ourselves more for our schools. And, uh, Mr. Folsie is pretty sharp, says that there are some federal funding issues that go with the limit on local contribution. So, I don't know if those are solvable. I want our citizens, if they choose, to be able to tax themselves for a specific reason, in this case, schools. And I think it would harder for revision to the tax government.
Cool, Mr. Trainey, and then I'd like Mr. Folsie to just very briefly, before he came here, he was involved in education funding litigation, so he explained it to me. And I got about eighty percent of it, I think. Um, Mr. Trainey.
I support this, it's a good, it's a good step in this direction. Because the problem, too, is with the foundation form is cut, that it lowers how much we can give the school district. We don't have a say in it. We know how much we give them now, the maximum, but this is going to lower what we can even give them, even if we have the money. And that's wrong.
Yeah, so Mr. Folsie, I repeated what you said back as the federal, and I think I got it almost right, but I want you to correct me. The federal government says, here are payment and lieu taxes aid that we provide. If you have a fair formula, by which they mean the rich districts aren't, are, are kept close to the poor districts or not too far away, then we will allow you to take that impact aid into your formula. The state can use it. If you don't, if you let the rich get richer and the poor get poorer, then we will send that impact aid directly to those districts where there'll be a bunch of winners and losers, depending on how much federal land you have in your area. How close is that?
Mr. Chairman, my opinion is that it's pretty close. But you have the actual experts here, so you might want to ask me.
Okay.
But I think that's right. The federal government gives federal impact aid for areas where there are land that's not taxable because they're federal, because they've got clapped down a big federal facility and pushed the whole people into systems. They send that money directly to the local school districts, and I don't think there's anything in the state that can prevent that money from getting to the schools. But, when the state has a formula funding that says I'm giving A, B, C, and D, there's a federal that says.
Step up and yell, please.
You can only recognize the fact that I have already given federal money to county A when you are setting out your ABC formula, if the districts are equalized or within, I mean, a disparity test, which is that there's a separation between the five percentile district and the ninety-five percentile district that's not too wide. If you, and, and as a result of that, the Alaska State Legislature has capped the optional local contribution that localities can make to their schools to keep everybody within a tighter band. Can I interrupt that, James?
No. Good.
Good, we're good, okay. Yeah, Mr. Dunbar.
So, can I ask the follow-up question, Mr. Folsie, or whomever? We also have, so I understand that, and I generally support those kinds of laws that do that kind of equalization. On the other hand, we have a system in Alaska that's kind of the inversion of what a lot of other states have, where we have a formula where Anchorage is the one, and even though we are more expensive than the Valley, we're the one. And places out in rural, in rural Alaska get much more money per student than we do. Does that not factor into that calculation?
Yeah, for the actual expert, but the answer is no, because the federal regulation doesn't look at the percentages of your calculation at all. It just says, tell me who your fifth percentile richest school district is, compare it to your ninety-fifth richest percentile district, and keep that tight.
But how do they?
However the formula works, it doesn't make any.
But how do they measure richest?
The, the total amount of school funding that's going to the, to the, to the district as a result of state contributions and local.
But, but it must be like per capita.
Per pupil.
Per pupil.
Yeah.
So, we aren't, we shouldn't be anywhere near the fifth. Are we, are we the upper limit? I think we would be somewhere actually kind of towards the middle or even the bottom.
Who's the?
Relative to the per capita spending in like Uthi'adak.
For the local, we're pretty high, for your local contribution.
They, they do look at the total amount that, that is given, and because we're fifty percent of the state's kids, we, we do have by far the most, um, revenue coming in. But, as you alluded to, unfortunately, when they do the disparity test, they don't judge whether the state's formula is necessarily accurate, like are we the one, or should it really be someone else? It's whether we have a state formula and.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jim Anderson, I'm the Chief Finance Officer.
We know, but we're making a record as well. Sorry, sir, go ahead. Well, rephrasing Forrest Point, though, it has to be per pupil that a lot of rural districts are the, the high and we're the low. No, and so we could come up.
It's certainly true that per pupil out in the, in the more remote areas, they get considerably more money per pupil. But because the state foundation formula is considered, everything is equal, um, all relatively, then that, that's where the disparity test, they assume the state formula is good.
So, it's only based on local contributions?
Well, the dis- the disparity test would be, can Anchorage give more than, more per pupil than other cities can give more per pupil? Well, the formula that the state has caps all the cities, all the boroughs, to how much they can provide. That's the part that is the disparity test, not whether the state gives us more per pupil or someone else more per pupil.
Barbara, and then Mr. Trainey, yeah?
Um, through the chair, Barbara Jones, municipal clerk. We are recording this meeting as the chair indicated. The recorder is up here. There are no speakers. It's pretty good, so I would like to request that for anyone in the audience, you really need to come to the bottom of the U, identify yourself, and speak loudly for the record. Thank you.
Have any trouble speaking loudly, Mr. Trainey?
I don't think so.
Okay.
My turn?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Dave Donnelly and I tried a couple of years ago to appropriate money to get new ISER study. They said that, we agreed to that money, it was five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But the problem was getting anybody in the state to authorize the study to be done, because the foundation formula was done, how many years ago, Dave? You were there.
Twenty.
I think you were going to remember, weren't you?
Yeah.
But anyway.
Yeah.
Um, the problem is, it's not been changed. And no one in the state wanted to let us do this, because they realized the formula's wrong, but it would impact negatively the rest of Alaska. So, why would they want to have the formula redone? Right now, they benefit, Anchorage loses. And so, we've got to figure out somebody to this thing relook at. Whether the assembly reaccompanies the money, we just cannot give in, the state to authorize the study to be done.
We, yeah, we don't have to use ISER, I guess, we could use some other.
Well, the problem is, ISER's the one that did last time, and you're going to have credibility issues if ISER's the one doing it this time. Because the argument was, well, if somebody's contracted with ISER, then it'll obviously be skewed. It's like a butcher putting his film on the scale. So, we're trying to get stated, the state to authorize it, couldn't.
Mr. Weddleton showed up a little bit ago, and I failed to recognize him, but he's been here in the meeting, apologize. Further discussion on this idea, yeah?
I want to say, go on record as saying thank you. This is a wonderful idea and great support, and I.
Can you identify yourself?
I'm Tina Bishop, the Superintendent of AST, and I have just some friendly amendments to make the top paragraph accurate in some of those wording. And, um, we're one of the hundredth largest, we're actually eighty-six right now, so, but I can just correct, like help.
And please understand this is a draft.
Yep.
And, uh, I intended to grab that across the top.
Like, just off the top of your head, these are awesome, so, but I'll just need a little few adjustments to make them.
Yeah, so, um, I would encourage us not to include the revising the cost differential thing as a part of this, make those separate efforts. The first paragraph was my clumsy attempt to show that there are things about Anchorage and our schools that are unique to the state. And if the legislators need, what can you say, weasel them, if they needed justification for doing.
That's better, yeah. Good, good drafting, yeah.
That would help. And what I'm hoping comes from this, if the school board agrees and the assembly agrees, with some really smart people, you know, will sit down with the state law and see if there's a way that this could be updated to allow us, if our voters choose, to tax themselves and modify the cap.
Mr. Dunbar.
There's a way forward. So, I want to, I appreciate what Mr. Dyson is trying to do, and I think it's born of a crisis created by the Donlady administration. But, um, I do kind of want to, us to play devil's advocate a little bit here on this idea. We are one of the few places in the state that has a tax, a property tax base that could reasonably support or come close to supporting this school district. If we were to do this and the state formula were to change, you could see that the state would start to shift ever more costs onto us. I mean, that's largely what the Donlady budget does. Right, Don? Uh, it, it moves, you know, it confiscates property taxes from, uh, uh, it, from the North Slope and from Valdez, it cuts services, and it says you all need to pay for this. And this is sort of playing into their hands to a certain degree, right? They're going to cut their funds and then expect to shift them onto us.
Busy agenda, but you want to respond to that, Mr. Dyson?
I understand. It's something for us to consider, but I do not believe we should make our decisions based on what, what we think might motivate somebody else to do something different. But it's a legitimate concern. What we should be doing is what's fair and constitutional. But I appreciate your points of view.
Yes, sir, and then Mr. Trainey.
And in fairness, what Mr. Folsie said and what I said earlier about the disparity test, we are unaware of DEED or the state ever going back to the federal government to see if there is a waiver. So, we're not speaking in, in terms of we understand the federal law, we just understand what the state has told us. So, um, it certainly might be possible that there are avenues in which Mr. Dyson's efforts could be pushed. We would just be unaware of those at this time.
And Mr. Trainey?
Just talked to a state senator days ago, they got the same issue sent to them from the Fairbanks Borough. So, other, other school districts around here are having this problem, and they're sending it in to the state headquarters, as we need to also.
Excellent. Uh, can we move on to the budget, then? Dr. Bishop, the, um.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to share just on the screen there, if you need to have access to any information that we present, anything about the school district, we have, um, right when you open up the school district, we'll have a hot topics. All of these items can be fine with broader detail. So, um, we have our budget book, which we're going to hold up, that each of you has. What we're going to look at today is just the budget, uh, treatise, just a very little mini version of what it is to access important information. However, the entire budget is online, and it was also made copies to really drill down to schools, programs, everything. If you, uh, it starts with data, and on page one and whatnot, uh, really, two and three are about who we are, what we're about, uh, you know, our destination twenty-twenty. If you look on page four, um, it does go into the, what we've just been talking about, the local contribution, and Jim can talk about that.
So, um, we've got about ten pages in the budget book, if you want to see every step by detail and, and how it plays out for us. But, but really, we follow the six-step foundation formula, which I believe all of the assembly members are somewhat comfortable with. Um, it's, it really started with, uh, you know, we're the, we're the one, um, so we're ground zero, everyone else makes more per student than the rest of us. Um, so every, every October, we go through a twenty-day count, the first twenty days in October.
Somebody's here on fourth.
And it's the average daily membership for each of those days. So, we really like to see the students show up in October. Um, after that twentieth day, the state takes all of the district's data, um, and then they come up with the adjusted average daily membership. And that's really the number that starts the foundation formula all the way through. So, as you walk through the steps, um, it's, it's, this is a simplified version to show six steps, but you do get to, at the end, um, what the state hypothetically owes us, then they subtract out what is the minimum local requirement from the municipality. Um, they take that out, um, because obviously that's being provided locally. And then they have the max capacity. Um, I think everyone in this room is aware that we're incredibly fortunate, there's a handful of districts in the state where the local population supports them a hundred percent.
Are there the other big ones, or?
And, and so, when you had mentioned Fairbanks, I, I mean, honestly, Fairbanks doesn't have a problem, they're under eighty percent contribution. So, when the state went down, Fairbanks can continue to give their eighty percent. This is the only district affected. Um, someone in Kenai, someone in Juneau, but no one, hands down, gives a hundred percent like Anchorage.
Kenai's maybe ninety-six to ninety-seven percent, Juneau about the same, Matsu about seventy, seventy-three, seventy-four.
When we talked about that number in the school, if you notice, it starts with a forty-four, twenty, that's full-time equivalent, and it's outside of, uh, students in preschools. So, a lot of kids aren't, they're full-time, so if we have a student, uh, taking two courses, uh, it's, it's two high school courses is part-time, uh, so then they would become, even though they're walking in our doors, so the amount of kids that we have walking in our doors looks very different than our ADM, than our adjusted ADM. So, we, we do continue to serve about forty-seven thousand kids, if you include preschools, special education, other preschools, all of those are found outside the formula.
So, and at the end, when you see, really, this is the page that the assembly, um, looks at when they vote on what is the local taxes. Uh, the assessor's office briefed the Budget Advisory Commission yesterday, or the committee, um, and he went through how the assessor comes up. So, they take our max local contribution that the city could provide, and then they determine the mill rate. And just for historical perspectives, for the FY nineteen-twenty budget, we're requesting two-hundred-and-forty-eight point eight million dollars come from local property taxes. If you look back to two thousand, um, eighteen, it was two-hundred-and-forty-eight point two million. So, what we're requesting for next year's budget is about two-hundred-thousand dollars more than what the municipality gave us two years ago. Just to put it in perspective.
Um, if you, uh, as I know that donut is full, just that this book can share where does the money go, where's the revenue according to the expenditures. On page seven, uh, shares just the budget development, the ADM, how much money, just the facts around this. Um, page eight, if this is where, if we wonder what, then this is a big reference for what I'll share later in regard to if there is any adjustments at the state level to the revenue. The PTR last year, moving into next year, we kept it the same, which is a pupil teacher ratio. It is not a class sized block, it is a, it's a, it's a funding formula for a lot of staff to schools according to pupils. And if you look at kindergarten up at the top, it's twenty-one. So, for every twenty-one kindergartners, there's a, a teacher added. Now, you might have kindergarten classes of twenty-four and a third grade of twenty, it depends on the, where the kids lie. Um, a lot of times, we'll give additional staffing to schools in addition to this formula, because the kids were bundled around two grade levels that would be hard to, to change. Um, at the very bottom, the board, um, we voted for FY twenty-twenty, which is next year, it says evidence-based model. Um, the board did vote on a grant, uh, to be placed in there that we would adjust our budget if the grant was given, to have evidence-based model class size, which is the, um, Picas odd in study, uh, in regard to class size, um, you know, best practices. It shares reductions, um, and additions, changes, and investments. Um, the middle schools and high schools are reported similarly on page ten and eleven. Uh, it shares that even while there might be some reductions, there's also some investments. We're not, uh, just looking at, we're having budget problems, let's get rid of this, we're still continuing to look at where can we make investments to have the type of education our community desires. Yeah, one of the investments is, uh, and some of our revenue is coming from Lower Yukon, a half million dollars we did just to share. Um, the board president, um, met, I think it was in October, November, with, um, we met with the board of Lower Yukon School Districts. They don't, their cash flow is pretty good, um, they don't have human resources and facilities. We have lots of great teachers, human resources, fantastic facilities. I don't, but for sure, they now are paying taxes in Anchorage, they bought the Long House, or maybe they won't, if used for educational purposes, but they bought the Long House, and they're having, uh, a nine-week dormitory there, they're going to go to our schools. Um, they're paying us, um, a half million dollars to send fifty kids a quarter, um, for four quarters, uh, to be, and we're going to start a two-to-five, five-thirty session at King Tech. Um, they're going to do their other classes, learn to get the driver's license during the day, come over. Um, but for every class we have, half of our kids get, goes to it free of charge. I mean, we're, we're just going to have, um, after-school time, uh, and they're going to be, we call them compacting, so in nine weeks, you can get what you originally get in nine weeks. So, you can get a full credit or, um, a half credit for a year in a nine-week period with tech prep, because it's right on university campus. So, we're, we're trying to figure this out. If they go bigger, then we go bigger, they're going to handle the housing part, that's out of our lane, we're going to do the education part. But that's a way to use our facilities. Um, basically, we're, um, taking in revenue, uh, to be able to help other districts. Um, they, the revenue that they're expending on us is, um, a drop in the bucket to what it would cost them to repeat this. So, we're just, uh, finding ways to have partnerships. There's two other school districts that want to come online, but we really want to have a success first with a small group. So, it's fifty kids coming in October, they're going to stay there, uh, right at the end of count, they're going to come, and then we're having a summer session, so our buildings will be used in the summer, and we'll open it up to more of our kids.
And these are for classes like small engine repair, carpentry, construction, plumbing, electrical, things that they just can't build a CTE course for a village with a, a small number of kids. And so, they're there to take kids from all throughout the peninsula, bring them in, they can go back to their home with a certification where they can get a job. And it's really a tremendous partnership, uh, for Anchorage with the rest of the state.
They'll also have access to Omnimetal College.
Uh, that sounds really interesting. Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so, are, are we, uh, using some distance education, uh, from our classrooms here in Anchorage and, and sending that out across the state of Alaska, and do we?
We're actually.
Grant, would you get much revenue from that?
That's, that's, um, that's, uh, a good thing, we, we're not, we're, we're broadening that, because, um, right now, our distance ed internally is really used for, um, primarily, uh, credit recovery, but we're going to use it for more robust, like we do in the summers, where you can just have choice. So, um, actually, the high school is being relocated, and we're, um, uh, just to share, um, we're going to have three programs in Central, we're going through that now of, um, uh, Padaya, a homeschool, is going to be housed there, high school's going to be housed there, and Central Middle School. So, we're moving, um, really to use our space, find efficiencies. I'm not sure if you knew, um, it worked very well, we moved crossroads into Betty Benson. So, we're really, rather than paying, um, in the future, avail, then, you know, move into some space, so we're finding efficiencies with the space and saving on leased properties, things like that. So, um, we would like to do that, we use, um, Apex as the same, we will be helping them out, but we haven't gone statewide yet, but there is a plan, um, we have a team working on it presently, um, to, to be able to, to do that. We are doing, which is, we did get a grant, um, and we use the platform of Zoom, the state gave us a grant, so we do professional development statewide on Zoom to all, like, you know, principals in any village can log in. Um, and then it's also recorded, if they don't have it live, it could be, um, cached, and then they can get it later. So, uh, with expertise from around the state, so we're, I took that over from DEED, because we have the capacity, and we have a Zoom studio. So, if you ever need to do a statewide conference, um, or just to meet everybody, it's an easy download, I loan a phone and a computer, but we have the studio right in AST, and you can project to anyone in the state that you want to, live.
Uh, Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you. Um, so, I, I had heard through the grapevine, so you talked about the, the Long House, somebody, they could, they, they purchased the, can also tell.
Through the, yeah, the chair.
I had heard through the grapevine that they were having difficulty getting their sort of, whatever status is required to be property taxing them. Um, have you heard anything that is, or from the administration that can speak to that? I mean, they are a non, they are a nonprofit school district that's going to wholly own and operate this for educational purposes, it seems like they would qualify for tax exemption, but I'd heard that they hadn't yet. Anyone speak to that?
Um, this is Alex, I'm the Chief Fiscal Officer, I will find out if that is the case in the court.
Okay, thank you. I just sort of heard a rumor, I'm not obviously involved.
And honestly, that, that whole side of that house, they really, um, stayed in their lane on that, because we, we don't mention that, but we're just, in fact, they're meeting with us today to settle the score on which, you know, which programs we're going to have, how, you know. But, uh, again, our expenditures are less than half of the revenue we're taking in.
Okay, yeah, I'm really, really pleased to hear that you guys are working with rural school districts, I really, um, obviously, um, I support that a lot, so thank you.
Uh, very succinct, and, and summary on the budget, yeah?
There it is.
Wait, can we ask questions about the impact of the governor's closed budget?
Well, yeah, I was just going to get to that part, yeah. So, we combined A and H, so is there going to be any? Well, first of all, does, this doesn't, what budget assumptions does this make? You asked for a grant, and that's.
So, the budget assumptions, um, were, uh, here it is, and we're going to it.
Okay.
So, this budget passed, uh, the board passed this budget, uh, was it the second meeting in February?
Yes.
Yeah, so the revenue that we built this budget on was based on the BSA, which is state law right now at fifty-nine thirty, as well as House Bill two-eighty-seven, which provided last year twenty million and a different additional ten million, that, that, we had the additional twenty million this year, which our, um, district received a little over five, about six.
Five point seven, seven.
Five point seven, seven, and then next year, we'll be able to, um, collect local taxes on that next year, so it'll increase even though it's, um, an extra ten million statewide. Um, we missed out on the local taxes, because it was after the tax notices went out in Anchorage. Um, and then, of course, our enrollment projections, and we do have them, um, continue to declining. Um, I think we're stabilizing and then can, can grow from here, but, uh, just to be safe, we kept them at, um, a, a bit smaller than this present year. And then our expenditures in this budget were based on salaries and benefits, and just to give your mind's eye, in ten years, the percent of salaries and benefits was nine percent, and now, or health insurance alone was only nine percent of that, now health insurance is seventeen percent, has gone up to our cost increase. And then utility costs, contract services, leases and rents, and so, um, this was a balanced budget according to that. Uh, we did reduce some FTE according to enrollment, but not because we, we were increasing PTR. We did reduce some FTE according to enrollment, but not because we, we were increasing PTR. Our PTR was held harmless and we cut back in other areas, found some of these efficiencies of lease savings and things like that. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I had Ms. Trainey and then Mr. Dunbar.
Superintendent, I was looking at the letter from Fairbanks Borough and they claimed they're going to be losing school loan reimbursement, $9 million. What are we going to lose?
It's in here, it's 41 million.
41 million? They're going to claim they're going to lose 26 million on the BSA reduction. What are we going to lose?
105 million.
When you look at the magnitude, it's just mind-boggling.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Donley and then Mr. Dyson.
There was one update to the handbook because this was pre-adopted of the budget. On the page eight, the PTR for the middle school, when the adoption of the middle school model would modify those numbers. For grade six, seven to eight.
I can speak to that. I know during the final budget meeting, when it was approved, the budget was approved, what wasn't discussed was how the middle school model would actually, we discussed putting $200,000 in, but not how are we actually going to do it? Because that part would be future coordinating. So we put the $200,000 to be unallocated, knowing that there would be discussions for the next several months as to what we would actually be doing with the middle schools next year. So that's why I didn't change it in here because the amendment was specifically for $200,000, not an approval of a plan that changed class size. And so it was very specific, so I felt obligated to not change PTR, knowing that that discussion had not occurred.
So me and then Mr. Dyson and Mr. Dunbar. So what were the two numbers? There was a 41 million and 105.
They're in here and I, and actually, if you have some documents, and I think this has maybe three slides on it, but there are several pieces of information.
CIP. I'm sorry, they're where?
So in a packet, there's, if you look at the very last sheet, it looks like this. This is just kind of very, in terms of people who likes charts, and then we have an infographic feature. So we gave it to you in two different ways. So this chart really demonstrates really what a 1%, the governor's budget, a 1% reduction and then a 5%, just so you have the magnitude of each of those, of any reduction. And if you look all the way to the right, that would be the governor's proposed budgets and it's in those categories. And they're separated out between this, the House Bill 287 and then just the regular foundation formula. Because there are two separate pieces of legislation, we kept them separate.
Okay, slow down, sorry. So the one in red is the governor's proposed budget and then you gave us 105.
And there's the infographic, I'll go over that one.
Okay, you're right.
This is just the money part that I was.
Yeah, and then those are the impacts.
The top line is elimination of House Bill 287. The governor would eliminate that totally, which is 8 million, you know, 100,000. And if that was eliminated as a whole separate issue, that was on the table to, consequently, they've had kind of a response that that would be, they can't remove that because it was legislative and then the whole legislature would have to go back and rescind that because of this past. But the percentage of reduction in net foundation funding is 77 million. But if you connect the 77 million to the local contribution that's connected to that, which member Trainee demonstrated at the beginning, it's tied, that's another 17 million. The local contribution that's connected to 287 is 1.93 billion. A total, that's where you get the 105, 88. So the governor's budget, just in the foundation formula, not in pre-K because we have 1.6 there, not anything else, just in the foundation formula and HB 287 is 105, 88.
What was the 41 million number you gave us?
41 million is specifically in bond debt.
Oh, yeah. And then, did the administration contact you before the budget came out about what the impacts would be?
No, none. No, I found out on the 13th, like everyone else watching the TV.
Mr. Dyson and then Mr. Dunbar.
Yeah, thank you. So the 41 is bond debt. We're counting on not getting.
Yes, through the, through the chair.
Wait, who did?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I got a couple more parts to that. Go ahead.
To put it in perspective, the city, we had already planned, our total bond debt for next year was like 76.5 to 77 million. So in the budget, we built in that we were going to ask for taxes for about 36 million, knowing that 41 million would have been state reimbursement. So that's where the 41 comes from, is the total bond debt for us for next year would have been about 77-plus million dollars. We would have paid less than half as a city. The state would have paid more than half from the state. So if this gets rescinded, it really is equal to more than half of all the bond debt that the district would have, will be paying next year. That's, that's what the 41 equates to.
Can I continue?
Yes, sir.
So as I understand my conversation with Mr. Folsy, when the voters approve a bond issue, they do so with what we've published, the assumption that it'll be state reimbursement. And so as I understand my conversation with Mr. Folsy, if, when we have that shortfall, that's above the cap. And so the city could raise the bill rate to reduce, get more revenue to fill that gap. Like, did I get that right, Mr. Folsy?
Sorry, Chair Croft came over and bent my ear while you were talking, so I have no idea, but I assumed that it was 100%.
I, the short, when we authorize the bonds as voter-approved, assumption of debt, if contribution of the state goes away, we could raise the bill rate and increase our tax income in order to backfill that loss.
My understanding is that's correct.
Yeah, my assumption was correct. You are correct. That's right. That's my bad.
So I apologize for doing that, but that's what I asked. How much, what would be the impact on property taxes if we backfilled these two things? If we said, okay, 41 million and 105, what's 146 million look like in increased property taxes? If they said yes? And Mr. Slivka? Just one second.
It's forced to fire.
Well, anyway, they're, they're working on what that answer is.
If you were allowed to, sir, correct?
Right.
From their original resolution.
If we were allowed to by the state, if the people said, yes, we'll let you bust the tax cap. So there's a couple of permissions we need along the way, yeah.
But this doesn't require busting it. It's above the cap.
Or really, yeah, kind of it was already in it. We got approval for it and then we were getting this reimbursement, which was keeping things low. And it just automatically goes to it. Is that right, Jason?
Yeah, just to answer your question, on, on the issue of the 41 million, oh, Jason Bakinset, deputy chief of staff of the mayor, on the 41 million dollars, the increase in the average homeowner's property taxes would be about $450 a year to cover the cost of the 41 million dollars in bond debt reimbursement. In the hypothetical, what you guys are talking about is if, that if we had the ability, no tax cap, nothing, to backfill the entire 151 million dollars or so, you would be looking at about a $1,650 per year increase for the average house year increase, which is about $350,000.
I may just clarify.
Yeah.
You just told me something very important, that we don't need any special action to raise the mill rate to backfill for the loss of the loan reimbursement.
Correct.
Wow. Thank you.
Well, yeah, maybe I understood wrong. By the way, I understood, we already got approval for those bonds when they passed. We said, hey, we're prob, we said probably we are going to get state reimbursement. It had been up to that point always done. So it's not going to cost you this much, but it could cost you this, it could cost you 100%, but every year, we keep it artificially low, if you will, with that money coming in and we just wouldn't get it anymore. So it was like pre-approved. But anyway, Mr. Dunbar and then Trainey.
So a comment and a question. I, I think we absolutely have to raise the mill rate if, if that happens. I mean, we're talking about bond debt reimbursement, our, we have to pay our debts, we have to protect our bond rating. We are going to do that. And it's, and the 41 million dollars, it's really, it's 41 million dollars is something close to that annually, correct? Because this is, this is a rolling average of bonds. You know, we retire some, we add some. So it's 41 million dollars this year, it might be 40 million or 39 million in the years to come, right?
Exactly. We're actually in a down slope of state reimbursement.
Right.
This year was 42, next year's 41, and it's starting its glide.
So I guess I would actually like to see that number. What's the, put the glide out and be like, okay, this isn't actually a 41 million dollar cut. This is a 450 million dollar cut, spread over 10 years, something like that. I think that that would help people conceptualize because even if we didn't pass our bond this year, let's say the people in Anchorage panic and don't pass the bond, still the mill rate's going to skyrocket because you have to protect that bond rating, you have to pay the bonds that you've already issued. And that total number is a lot larger, right?
300 million dollars over the next 19 years.
Okay. So I think that's important to remember. The, the question I wanted to ask here, and I apologize if you've got a lot of numbers in front of you, so I apologize if it's here and I'm just not seeing, but I'm reading your numbers, the Dunleavy budget passes, or more realistically, he vetoes and they can't find 45 votes to override his veto, so it becomes law. 1,125 personnel are laid off from the schools, of which 787 of them are either instructors or special education instructors or aides, right? So two questions. One, which specific programs would we be likely to cut? And I guess that's a question for the school board, you know, you're going to get rid of Rika Shula, are you going to get rid of, you know, what are the, what are the sort of specific programs? And two, what does that look like in terms of class sizes? What's the increase in class sizes from laying off 787?
So we have some information that we can share. We also put in here, go back for one more, to the one, this one. So we put in there, the reductions aren't as, this is the bottom of the page that you just looked at about the numbers, the straight numbers. And this really shares, this is urgent for us because there is timelines for people to be notified. You can't, you know, it's very difficult to, as we know, to make any kind of reduction of course without following the law. These are all statutory requirements or in collective bargaining units. The next one is the class sizes that we'd be looking at. And this paper shares the cost of programs. This, this just shares program, programmatic costs, just to take a look at them. And the top of the page would be of the percentage of the 105, which are the numbers that you shared in regard to, there's about 700 that would be directly related to teachers and classrooms. We didn't just take the 105 and, you know, superficially put it on top of class sizes because some of it wouldn't be class sizes, it'd be other things reduced as well.
Right.
Of the ones that are in class sizes, just that money in classrooms, not even special education, the top demonstrates what a 1% reduction would look like, and that's 14 million, just to have a mind's eye of the magnitude. A 5% reduction is still 30 million and the governor's proposed budget is the 105.9 million, which would be 10 kids increased in every grade level.
So the 1% and the 5%, are those just illustrious or is there some?
You know what? I would just say that the process that we're going through right now is the same as that process that I'm used to going through in the last 14 years of being assistant superintendent, superintendent. It is the same song, different year, because we're always going back with this, with this. I mean, anybody that's been down there, education, this was the first year that we actually knew what we would have. Honestly, though, I guess back in, when Palin was there, there was a $100 increase for three years when it was redone. So those, besides those three years, and I was a principal at that time, this is the next step. So to me, that budget across the state is really absurd. I mean, it's just so grand that it's crazy. But what they're talking about down there is some cuts, we'll have to have some cuts. So I'm, I just wanted to share that if we keep focusing on this 25, we can get all round up and then if they give us five, I don't want anybody to be happy with five because it's still 30 million, you see? So going as a negotiator, a business person, I don't want them to think that, you know, go in high, go in low, come out in the medium, because really, we don't need any reductions. We want to keep 287 and we want to keep the 5930, right? We want to go, come out of this year what we went into this year understanding. And so there has been discussion. We had a senator at our meeting on Monday that said, yes, there will be cuts probably. I mean, isn't that, it kind of just slid out that you'll probably see some cuts? And so the reason there, there isn't, no one in the House or Senate has dropped a bill that says that, but for idea-wise, that that still should be on our radar because I hate to feel like, man, we got skimmed under that 25% and look, now we're only 30 down. We're doing well. That's really a farce too. We should really be focusing on what it is that we need for kids. So these are just some information tools. Once we put it out there that we're going to cut music or cut this, what happens in our classrooms is chaos for our teachers and our families and our kids. And we're trying to balance what is a true urgency fear to what could really happen because we have nine weeks of school left this year, but people's families and their livelihood, I mean, just the stress that that will cause in buildings is enormous in our city. And so we're just trying to go at this in a methodical way to understand what really is true and not.
I had Mr. Trainey and then Mr. Dyson. Mr. Trainey, you asked legislative legal on, what was that number you guys on the, it was 1,400 per household or member being passed? Was that the same question?
Yes, that was the same question. On 1,400. And it's not just teachers, it's not just students, it's our taxpayers. We're going to send them a ballot case for the second half and we're going to ask them to approve bonds, but whatever it is, we're going to ask them to approve bonds and they're going to have to understand, which they will, that they're paying 100% of the cost. But you guys were really good for the last 20 years. Every time we have a bond, probably, you guys always say subject to annual appropriation. And now they're walking away with their obligation to the city. When I look at the state constitution, education responsibility to the state, and now they're going to back away and say, we're going to leave it up to cities. But that's our taxpayers and it's academic and easy for them, but when they come, we have to deal with this on the senior level to raise their, raise their tax rates up. They're going to be there with sports and ox cards and we can't run away to general high.
Yeah, what are the ox cards for?
Is that for bodies?
They turn them over.
Okay, oh, I'll catch you. Okay, towards you. I had Mayor Berkowitz and then Mr. Dyson, Mr. Hallen.
Just, Mr. Berkowitz, just by contrast, if you had an increase in the budget, what kind of vision could you provide? Because I'd like to know what the alternative is.
Write off now?
Yep.
Okay, so we would, our kids would be reading, our primary, our fundamental, all kids would have an entry level, leave third grade, and this is kids at any school, anywhere across the district. The fundamental skills would be a guarantee. And then from there, really in understanding 21st century, we have work going on to have school-wide coding. Of course, we would continue our, with the arts, our music, our, you know, band opportunities, singing, continue to be integrated into the city. Middle schools really just expand the opportunities and school might not look like I go the same every day, but have different opportunities, more experiential learning. When we get to high school, we already have at King Tech, where we are working with, if you graduate from King Tech, you are going to do a mentorship or internship for six weeks, so you leave your school, you are not in your school for six weeks. We looked at within five years if we could citywide have our kids have experiences, whether I'm going to be a doctor or, you know, we do it for the gifted mentorship and we do it for this mentorship, but we would want a mentorship for all kids so that they're connected back to our community, back to the work of the city. But certainly just increase, you know, meeting kids' needs and meeting their dreams and having them do what they want to do, but also close our equity gap in our city. It's a primary concern for us and we do, do really well for kids that like, you know, like join our programs and get exposed to them. So we need to find out a way, how do we get kids who would otherwise not be interested, interested? Because we know education will matter, education will matter for them. So really building capacity and letting teachers do what they do and falling in love with their, their craft and not having to worry about this.
Thank you. Mr. Dyson and then Mr. Hallen.
Yeah, thank you. We'll all be doing some triage, plus some work. Sports is a very big motivator in my life and that, and particularly music has been great for my kids, my grandkids, including the schools. What if we cut them all out? All the sports, non-teaching coaches, all the travel and virtually all non-academic after-school activities? How much?
Dr. Bishop, is that, so Fred on this, fine arts is 4.1 million, activities, sports clubs, et cetera, is 4.8? Are those, those categories?
And honestly, and I'll put in a plug, and so really, you can eliminate honestly every elementary teacher and we still want to make up the deficit. So that's how significant it is. But, I mean, if we can share, our criticism is that kids are graduating without having to do stuff. There's evidence that shares that the non, like the hidden curriculum in music, in sports actually teaches kids the grit and the things that we want them to learn in the workplace and primarily is because they, they have to show up and they have to perform for other people and they're held accountable by other people, not the teacher.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah, so there's evidence for these things too, yeah.
Look like a little under 10 if you did all sports and all. Look like a little under ten if you did all sports and all clubs and all music.
Clearly make up a difference here.
Yeah, you still got ninety-five to go. All right, now people are going, I have Mr. Holloman.
I'm just gonna touch base and say, if you, having worked at, on schedules for a building, at the building level, if you eliminate your work as your teacher, you have to go hire two teachers, because those classes are so large. The instruments and a lot of things that do make it expensive, but when you're working on schedule, you put a lot of kids in those classes, so it doesn't necessarily save the money. I was gonna shoot back, the potential layoffs is always less than the positions we eliminate. And usually, it's pretty far out of whack, if we're gonna lose fifty positions, we lose hundreds of people through attrition every year, and no one may get laid off in that case. But going back five or six years, when we eliminated about a hundred positions and we had layoffs of fifty, I'm gonna say that emotionally, that was destabilizing to about a third of the workforce. There are about a thousand people sitting there wondering if they're gonna lose either their, where they're at, if they have work to get to, or potentially be laid off. And it induces a lot of stress. The other thing that happens, though, a lot of the public doesn't see, is in the, when we laid off fifty people, we had involuntary displacements of about two to two hundred fifty people. And in a few cases, people were happy about the change, they were somewhere where they wanted to move from anyway. But very often, teachers, they get into a building when they get hired, and either it's a great fit, or they move somewhere. They might move close to their home, so that they have the ability to take care of their own children in a convenient way with their job, et cetera, et cetera. Involuntary transfers disrupt people's lives in a really severe way. And the other part, I think, that frequently the public loses sight of is, good schools are a team of the whole staff working together. And unfortunately, when it comes to things like involuntary transfers and layoffs, we treat them like widgets, just we can pull this person out, we can put this person in. But the truth is, it's kind of like, it's kind of like doing football player trades without looking at any of the stats, it just doesn't work out that well. The other thing is, at the building level, if you have to reduce staff, you, if you have an art department with three people in it, and music with three or four people in it, and K T N A with three or four people in it, you can do across-the-board reductions and keep all your programs, but in a dynamic cut. Or if you're down to where you just have one art teacher, or one music teacher, et cetera, even if the district doesn't say, we're gonna cut this program, at certain buildings, you will lose programs, because they just can't, you can only put so many kids in a math class. So, you hit a point where you can't lay off another math teacher or English teacher, and if you've just got one elective, a department with a single teacher on it, involuntarily, you lose that program, because you just don't have anywhere else to make the cuts. And we always think in middle schools, there are legal requirements, but at high school, there are legal requirements for graduation, and you'd have to find a different way to get that credit for that student. So, these, I think everybody understands that the impacts are huge, but there are actually hidden ways of impact that people will realize as we get into it, that they're not seeing right now.
I have Ms. Marseth, and Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Hildy, Ms. Marseth.
I've been, I'm on the Board of Threat also, and we had a consultant come in yesterday. I've been talking to several senators and representatives, and I think everybody has pretty much said, if we have a budget by June first, we'll be doing good. Unfortunately, that's too late for the school district. And what I see, or what I think is going to happen, based on the information I'm getting, and the process of this budget is gonna have to go through, is that we're gonna be laying off, or giving pink slips, not laying off, but giving pink slips to those, that large number of employees, teachers, staff, various people. And what that's gonna do, if I was a teacher and I've been going through this process every year, I'd be leaving. And so, I think we're gonna lose a large part of our teacher population, and as a realtor, I think we'll see a lot of houses coming on the market, and that's gonna affect our economy also. So, there's a lot of things to this.
Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would expect that if we cut the fine arts and the activities out of the totally, that's gonna increase the dropout rate, because for some kids, the sports is what motivates them to get them out of bed in the morning to go to school, because if they don't show up, then they can't participate in the other programs. And so, we've been trying to reduce our dropout rate and increase our graduation rate, and I think that unfortunately, cutting those out would, we'd be going the wrong direction.
Thank you, and Ms. Hildy.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor for his question, because that's really the question we need to be talking about more often, right? You heard that criticism from Senator Barham, what is your plan, where are we going? And we have that, but that has to be the focus in everything we're talking about. One of the big pieces of that in planning is the quality of our teaching. We have to have the best teachers, right? We know most of them come from the War Forty-Eight. That's not just this year, the impacts of this year will be significant. But that's next year, year two, year three. Who's gonna want to come to Anchorage to teach? How do we make this an attractive place for people to move? You know, if you're a Midwest teacher, are you gonna go to Florida or six months of winter, right? Are you gonna go to a stable school district? Are you going to go to one where the funding is always up in the air and you're, you know, some of the people getting laid off this year were laid off three years ago, right? I think we just have to keep that focus in whatever we're talking about. So, I just wanted to thank the mayor for keeping that at the forefront.
Mr. Trainian, I'll just put you in big letters at the top, and I'll just intersperse you every other two or three.
And you being a new official in previous existence, you know what's gonna happen. Once the teachers know they're not gonna be kept, they're gonna start looking more Forty-Eight, right now the economy's booming down there. And they will hire these teachers, will never get them back to Alaska. So, this is a long-term bit to our school district. It's gonna be hard for the school district to survive this. I don't think Judo understands that, or wants to.
Mr. Dunbar, do you have some positive things to say?
I have a question, I have, no, well, I have a question for, I have a question for Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Donnelly, you are a deputy commissioner in the Dunleavy administration. Can you stop this? Will you work to stop this, and why or why not?
Well, my job description is within the Department of Administration, and it has almost nothing to do with school administration or school funding. There's some complex pension-related issues that don't, where the division, the decisions that are made by the department, which I'm not privy to, I'm not part of, don't affect the total impacts upon the school districts, they just impact how, whether divided up. So, within my role within the administration, I don't have any impact on school districts.
Do you have any internal advocacy role? Do you have any influence on the governor?
No, it's not my role as deputy commissioner to utilize my role as deputy commissioner for something like that.
This is the most important thing going, so we've spent about half our time on it, and that's appropriate. We do have some other things on the agenda, but Mr. Holloman.
I was gonna quickly respond. Last time we had layoffs, when we called people back, about ten percent didn't show up. And that was not as toxic an atmosphere. You know, people, some people are bound to the state, and they're gonna stay here no matter what. We actually had people voluntarily exit the profession, because they didn't want to see people in the usual profession laid off. I mean, I, these were individuals that spoke to me personally about why they decided to go ahead and retire and start other things. And unfortunately, we don't get to pick the talent whether of the people that stay or don't come back. It randomizes, but unfortunately, the people that must tend to leave, the people have options, the people have their lives together, and the people that have other talents. So, it, the impact is worse than the numbers would have.
That wasn't very uplifting, I was asking for uplifting.
That'll cost you some money.
Further or final comments on the budget, the budget presentation and the impact of the governor's proposed cuts? You said this is the most important thing, but there's some others, we might circle back to it if you want, later, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In previous meetings, we focused on outcomes and vision and how to increase student outcomes. And I understand it, as I understand it, stability is such a critical factor and is so closely correlated to student outcomes, that this jeopardizes so much the degree of cuts. And we know there's a nationwide teacher shortage. We know it's even more pronounced in Alaska, and we know we're gonna have a really difficult time getting, retaining good teachers. I'm trying to, I can't really find a positive thing to say, Mr. Kraft, except that our community here is clearly very committed to supporting our school district and our students. And the ways in which we can do that, besides the local contribution, I mean, whether that's shouldering, more debt reimbursement, I would be interested in looking at, if we can do something with transportation costs. I don't know where some of those potentials might be. And then I would just ask another question, when we talk about increased class sizes, there are some facilities that simply cannot handle that. I mean, the fire marshal will not allow it. And there are some charter schools that have specific facilities that have been built with a maximum size as well. So, I mean, there's a real, we're bumping up against some real constraints of reality. We simply physically can't increase class sizes unless we tear down walls or hire other people to, you know, pick up what the band teachers, you know, were doing. So, anyway, that's, I would end on a note that our community is very supportive, and it's good that we're all here trying to find a way through this that is essentially destabilizing our education system. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Ms. Slifka, the total amount of property taxes we raise each year is order of, sorry to put you on the spot, but.
I think it's close to, or general?
Yeah, it's close to right around six hundred, or.
Oh.
Everybody, the school district, I guess. This would be a, what, a twenty-five percent increase? Yeah, Mr. Rock.
So, if we find we can't bump up our local match, and you're stuck with a hundred million, it'd be really hard to fill that, but, you know, we do some things, like we charge you dues, our trails, and your skiers, and so on, I don't know, it's probably not a huge amount, but if we were to say, okay, we won't charge you anymore, and then just let's say, Parks and Rec takes over your sports clubs and et cetera, and then we reimburse you a hundred percent or something, I mean, there are ways around to do stuff like that, so we get more money to you without having this, it'd be hard to hit a hundred million, but we can start getting some of those too.
Certainly, I mean, through the chair, there's communities such as Kodiak that really has an outside support to send their kids on planes in different areas. So, where the school district plays for a little bit, the city and this outside 501(c)(3) that's really sponsored by the city helps additional funding. So, there are, whether it's that, you know, transportation, any kind of preschool, any salary or food service, any, any funding outside of that operational that's held to by that, you know, that's kind of the, what do they call, Robin Peter PayPal, Robin Hood, they call it the Robin Hood Law, so that it stays within this, you know, boundary. Anyway, but they, they, we do have funds outside of that, and functions outside of that, is what I'm trying to say, that we could have assistance and get assistance in a roundabout way, yes.
How many?
I mean, it would not even, like, if you think about it, you know, the, just the four million is so small of a, compared to the whole, so, and that's how we did this, just to show the magnitude of what goes into these programs as to what they're talking about. And none of these were looked at to be reduced, the board hasn't had that conversation, we haven't had that conversation probably, and the reason being is, we've got children and teachers, you know, coming up, showing up every day, and the last thing I wanted for them was to just be worried when we just don't know yet, and when, when the House and the Senate drop their bills, then that's when we'll know what's in front of us.
Ms. Marseth.
So, the one thing I wanted to address too, if you look at our budget, it is quite larger this year, but this is the first year we've put a budget together of what we actually need, not what we get, and having smaller classroom sizes, pre-K and that sort of thing. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that that's the large increase that you see is, we are now asking for what we need to adequately fund education instead of what the state gives us.
And President Marseth, that's in the grant request that you had?
Right, right.
And that was a sixty-three, and it's totaled about eighty, in terms of, if we had eighty-one, we would do these things with it.
Right, right. The other thing I did want to say though too, is when we talk about all these things that we can do, I foresee a lot of task force of us working together in smaller groups and coming up with ways that we can share resources or those type of things, but I think we're a little, hopefully a little premature, but it's certainly something we'll be looking at possibly.
Final comments?
Yeah, Ms. Lefranz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It costs the state of Alaska about twenty million a year in teacher attrition costs, I believe, and a conservative estimate per teacher is about twenty thousand, I think, for recruiting and training, and maybe probably a little bit higher. But that twenty million, I just wonder how much greater that cost is after this exercise, or depending on where we end up, because I think just that, again, the destabilizing effect and the impact to recruitment and retention, I mean, maybe forty million this year? I mean, I don't know, at the end of the day, who knows? But I think that's something to consider as well.
I agree. Can we briefly do the other items, and then, as I said, we can come back to this, because it's the most important thing going? Was the Chugiak Eagle River update meant to be earthquake-related or separate? So, are those are really B and C, kind of the same thing?
Through the chair, I believe that the Assembly put both of these on, but they're pretty much kind of tied together, right?
I think so, unless somebody else has another interpretation of the Chugiak Eagle River update. Yeah, so then tell us about the earthquake impact.
I guess Chugiak Eagle River is coupled into earthquake, but the earthquake damage is broader than just Chugiak Eagle River, and I'm just gonna turn it over to.
Mr. Roth.
Through the chair, my name is Tom Roth, I'm the chief operating officer for the district. If I might, next slide, please. Just to provide, as discussed, and update where the district stands with regards to Eagle River Elementary School and Greening Middle School, by way of background, after the earthquake on the tenth of December, the district reopened two schools, however, and Eagle River area did not due to seismic damages. So, the district and the board looked at this problem from two different angles. First was to address what would be, what we have defined as a short-term need, looking at the next academic year, how do you, how do you address the needs of the staff and students in those two schools? The second need is really kind of a longer-term look of what to do with the ability to go back, after you go back to school. So, that's how we're gonna shake the conversation, and the purpose is to provide information frequently to enable us in discussion and questions, so. In short, the district held several community and staff meetings last month, also had a survey to get some input, feedback from the community and staff, what they thought would be the best approach to this next academic year. So, when the earthquake occurred, we, the district was able to relocate Greening in its entirety to Chugiak High School. Eagle River Elementary School, because of the number of students involved, we dispersed the students and staff, and the decision by the superintendent was to keep students with teachers. So, the feedback that we received from the community, one was a continuation of the Greening situation at Chugiak High School, but also to understand from parents, you know, what did they want to do with regards to their students, and the thought being is, many parents would probably want their kids to go to a single school, vice what happened where they were potentially going to several schools. So, to summarize what the decision is approved by the board on the fourth of March, that Greening will continue at Chugiak next year, and we're looking to make some improvements in their situation to try to make it so that both programs can operate at that school effectively to do their mission. Now, with Eagle River Elementary Now, with Eagle River Elementary School, a bit of a different situation again because of the numbers of kids involved. So, the general education students will be, will be effectively reboundary to go to either Homestead Elementary School or to Birchwood ABC. Now, Eagle River had an optional program. Those students will, as a program, be relocated to Fire Lake Elementary School. And then the last group of students we had were the, were the pre-K kids. And after the earthquake, they went to Gravenworth Elementary School and they will continue at that school. So, I'll pause if there are any comments from board members or the administration.
Got you. Dr. Bishop, and then other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Dyson.
Are you or are you not going to fix Eagle River and Greening?
That's, that's a great question. And I would say that that discussion is still being addressed with the long-term ADHOC committee that Member Snelling is leading. And I'll talk to that here momentarily.
I can add that the, we know for sure that the building can't be used next year, so we had to do a short-term for staffing reasons. Parents wanted to know, they needed to arrange. So, it was separated into two different categories so that just the processes for school choice, lottery system, as well as teacher moving around could take place. So, transfers, that is. So, this is for next year, this is what it'll look like. And the next, it'll say long-term is those bigger questions.
Ms. Wim Hof.
So, at the moment, Birchwood Elementary has a section at the school, but what I'm hearing is that they will be pulled into Birchwood just by boundaries. And so, that it, the kids will then become Birchwood students. Okay.
Ms. Tring.
Thank you. I've got a question for you. We don't own the ground. That's something like a native corporation. We get, we rent, I think, for ten dollars a year, something like that. Is there any prohibition on what we can do with that land? We have to keep it and move it to another school? Or can they give the land back to them? Are we required to tear the schools down before we give them back the property or what? Have you guys even looked into that?
Through the chair. We have not had any, any direct discussions with the Clutna Inc. on that topic. We do know of Greening and Eagle River Elementary School, those schools are built on, on properties that are still owned by the Clutna. So, we, we believe that if the decision is to repair those schools and it's really a status quo, that that agreement between municipality and Clutna will continue. If, on the other hand, the decision is made to not rebuild or to eliminate those schools, and that could either result in a new school or not, then we probably would be looking at some negotiation with the Clutna either to cede the property in total back to them. I mean, that would be a municipality decision. Or if we were to say rebuild, you may have something to say about.
Would you look into, give the Clutna when you can, but I'm concerned that we have, we have structures on their property. Is there anything in the legal documents when we got that property requires us to remove any buildings on it?
Yes.
And who's going to pay for it? What's the cost going to be? You can't tell me that now, but just take a look at that. Because it's, if you can't redo it, then we've got to figure out how we take the building down, how we pay for doing that.
So, through the chair, you know, one of the, one of the things that we have looked at is if that were a decision to demolish the building and clear the site, we have looked at that from a costing perspective. And we're assuming that we would, we would own that and that it could potentially be cost that would be reimbursable through FEMA and the state to some extent.
Thank you, sir.
There's also, through the chair, statute now that allows us that if we did close a school, that some funding is tapered off over five years. So, it's an incentive that if you had to close schools, it's an incentive that the money wouldn't stop. Because in the budget book, you see a school as a funding unit, and that's how it starts. So, there is potentially some funds as well when you close a school to taper off. So, it's, there's different money sources for that as well.
And how long does that last? I've heard of that, but I.
Five years.
It expires in five years or anytime we do it over the next decade, it lasts five years?
The bill is set and you continue to receive money for five years for a building that you closed. Not full, it's tapered down, but it does take finances to mothball the building, to shut it down.
I'm sorry to be daft. It's a permanent law that has a five-year taper or it's a law that ends in five years?
Permanent law that has a five-year taper.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Mr. Dyson.
Just strongly, something you'd advise or request that you be including a Clutna loop down and just keep them informed, let them know they're welcome at all your meetings. And everybody needs to realize that the adaptations we were able to make, particularly in this well-organized area, because there was open capacity at some places and so on. So, you guys got a tough decision about building, rebuilding when all the facilities aren't fully utilized. I appreciate that.
Miss Snelling did invite Clutna.
Yeah, she was going to speak. Yeah. So, the Clutna does have a seat on this ADHOC committee. And they have been, they did attend our last ADHOC committee meeting last week, and I expect they'll be there today as well. So, they are giving the information.
Good, thank you.
Yes.
I asked you whether you lost a bet or whatever. I don't know what you're doing, chairing a committee to close schools, but it's your business.
It's not to close schools. Assess them.
Assess them, good.
And she volunteered.
You're the shortest straw.
Still people mad at me for even talking about closing Central.
That's a good idea.
Apparently not, yeah, some people.
That may be school now.
Can we move to the bus barn, I'm four D.
Student transportation facility.
Student transportation facility. It's a literative. Yeah, Robert, do you want to talk to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Dunbar. That's usually my first.
Step on up and shout at us.
That's usually my first comment. There is no more. As most of you are aware, our new location for our student transportation facility has now been approved. Our next step will be the planning and the entitlement step for that. So, we will be working directly with the ASD planners, with the student transportation staff, to start working on a concept layout on that nine point four acres to see how we can lay it out for operational efficiency, really how many buses we need, what does that, what does the maintenance facility look like? Where do the employees park? Is it all fenced? Those are all the specific provisions. Now, we'll start working on all the specific requirements within their buildings, office and so on. The next step will be laying that out. And then we will have to go to the carp engineers for a carp engineer's permit. It is wetlands. And we'll also have to go through a conditional use permit process, which everything from, as you know, air quality is an issue, noise is an issue, buffering and site visibility. So, all of those issues will be addressed during the conditional use process. So, you'll see us going forward. Be aware, assembly members, and I'll be bringing forward a sole source contract again for that planning and entitlement contract so that we can get started as soon as possible. And I'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Dunbar, and then Mr. Tring.
So, I know through conversations with you and through things that the school district said on the record, and when we talk about air quality, the primary way we improve air quality is by improving the buses, buying newer buses with catalytic converters or whatever. But is there a way, and this isn't more for the school district, is there a way to build the concept of air quality improvement into the physical layout? I don't think it was a major part of the original design of the existing facility. Is there any way to build, and, you know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not sure how you do this, but to, to take that from the beginning when you're, when you're laying out this new facility? Is there anyone that can speak to that from the school district? Is there anything that can be done?
Yeah, I'll just say, if I might, through the chair, the site that the assembly approved is actually geographically more distant from populated areas than where speaking transportation is currently located. As far as, as far as the build of the structure, I guess, and not to go too far down the road, as part of this, this whole discussion, it was, it was the developer who was looking to build on the site. The developers building to fund a replacement site and facility for student transportation to relocate to. So, what we're describing has potential additive costs to it. Insofar as, as those requirements are given to the developer and he's able to fund those, you know, we are, the district is absolutely on board with wanting to mitigate noise, smell, exhaust issues with regards to the transportation facility. It's a funding issue.
Well, just really briefly.
Yeah.
So, I know that looking at closed structure is outside the realm of what's fiscally possible. I understand that. But my understanding is right now you use fans, maybe I heard this wrong, you use fans that like literally point upwards to blow the exhaust so, you know, so it gets above the point where it drifts the neighborhoods. If that's the case, is there some way to think about that before you lay out the new facility and?
Do you blow exhaust up in here? Not you personally, but.
They do. They, the fans start, I've worked with Heather Philip, our transportation director, and there are fans and they do start on cold mornings at two o'clock in the morning before they ever start buses to start there, so. But there are, there could be many different ways to address this. And that's one thing that the conditional use process and our consultants will start looking at, because we know that it's a very big issue for the neighborhoods. So, it will be addressed and there will be some alternate ideas and ways to maybe mitigate or at least work, address that. So, those will all be looked at during the conditional use process.
Member Hildy, did you want to?
Just to clarify, the fans are just preventing inversion. So, if something's going over the mountain, that would keep the smog low level, it's not to just float up in the air for random, it's just prevents that weather phenomenon happening.
Right, which is the primary concern of these areas in the council, is the inversion.
Member Tring.
Robin, this is timing, chief. My municipal council wants this whole thing undergrounded. They won't be happy to do that. I won't be on the subject by that time, but just take a look at that.
Yeah, take a, take a look at underground.
Through the chair, Mr. Tring, we will absolutely look at that.
Thank you. Give them the results to feel.
All right, good. Thank you. School district's six-year capital improvement plan, is that one of our handouts, Dr. Bishop?
Each, each assembly and board member should have a product to hand out briefly. That is an eleven by seventeen copy of the six-year capital improvement plan. And the gap sheets are the projects that are also represented on the six-year plan. So, in short, this morning, the assembly information memorandum was filed with the court. The six-year plan was approved by the school board a couple of weeks back. So, so just to very briefly highlight, it's not my intent to go through the six years of the plan, but just to briefly highlight a couple of things. So, within the six-year plan, year one is, is in fact the bond proposition that the assembly approved that will go on the ballot. And you'll see that the amount represents what was brought forward by the district as well as schooling to be by the assembly for an amount of fifty-nine point one million. And that bond is primarily a, for maintenance bond. You'll note there are multiple roofs on it. Also, there is money, again, that four million, that is specific to earthquake recovery repairs for still under Chugiak Eagle River area. Now, years one through four, the amount of monies that were on the bond or on the bond for those years are matched to what the district anticipates retiring in debt. You'll, you'll note in year five, year six, there's a bit of a modification to approach where the district is looking at potentially doing multi-year, two-year bond. Lastly, I just want to make comment on year two. You'll note that we submitted this, this was pre-earthquake. So, you'll see a number of projects, they're, they're still very significant, important projects, but we are anticipating that we gather additional information on earthquake damages, that we may be coming back next year with modifications that would include repairs to damage the schools during the earthquake. And I'll stop here for any questions or comments.
Yeah, Mr. Roth, you and, you and I have had this conversation for a long time. I continue to think, did on the school board and do as an assembly member, that tying what you're going to ask for in capital request to what you borrowed twenty years ago, rather than a description of the actual need is, I can understand it's political utility, but it is not what I want to hear from the school district about. Like, it, it may roughly fit, that is, it may be that, but to say, we're going to do what we were, which was just what you borrowed twenty years ago, and that may be more or less than you need this year. So, I can only think that's a poor cipher for, it doesn't mean anything, really. What, what we need to talk about is capacity and need and damage and all those things, not what we happen to have done before. And then my question is, yeah, on middle schools, you know, Rome is not here, East is the only high school, that's where the, the significant undercapacity or overcapacity, underutilization is. I don't see the Greening or Central issues at all. So, they've, they've just been pushed off the six-year plan? What is the plan for those two middle schools that are aging?
Through the chair, the, those schools have, have not disappeared. Greening, were we to extend this out twelve years, Greening would be year seven for bond funding for design, year eight for construction. Central is a bit further out, we're looking probably at year ten on the six-year plan. We're Central because of its age, you know, we would be looking at either a significant renovation of the building or replacement.
And then, I'm sorry, who is in the queue next? Oh, yeah, Mr. Wim Hof, sorry.
So, what's the reason for the two-year bond?
Through the chair, thank you. That's a great question. So, so, couple of, couple of advantages to going to a multi-year. The first being that it's really more of an economic driver. We, we are in this, in this situation now where we bond year to year. And as a result of April bonding, we are, we are in a situation where when we go to RFP for designing and for construction, we're, we're kind of coming late to the party. And then most of the contractors, they have filled their part. So, we are paying more premium dollars on what we are bidding on for both design and construction. That's one. But two, it's, it's a bit more of a, your contractors have more confidence if they know they've got a steady two-year streaming plan for funding, they're more willing to take risks. What we have now is a year to year. So, the district has had situations where we'll, we'll, we'll get money for a design. We'll go to bid and do the design, but then we don't get the money for the construction. So, contractors like the certainty of knowing that there will be a steady funding stream enabling to probably bid less or trust risk to them. So, those are the primary drivers.
But the downside?
The downside is sticker shop. If owners see it, a higher amount. But then, it was probably in the education process where if you were to look at it over time, the actual amounts are probably, if not less, they're commensurate to the year in the year.
Excellent. This will be.
And just on multi-year bonds, you know, I like to talk about them a lot. When we were going through this process last fall, it pops up that this town, a conservative town, and I would do collagen, right, like dry collagen, not conservative, right? They have just passed a two-hundred-million-dollar, ten-year bond. So, you pay it over three years and you don't ask for another ten years. Multi-year bonding is the way they're going to, related to Ankrich, it'd be like a four-billion-dollar bond, to say, we're going to not ask you for ten years, we're not coming back. That's what's happening in the War Forty-eight, we say, we get a five-year bond, don't come back to us for five years, tell us what you need, let's pass it, let's move on. So, this is what people are doing for planning, for efficiency, for what kind of workforce do we need and not having to come back and forth, or play the, you know, political game you talked about, what is, you know, what's the bond reimbursement amount? So, I just, when I go out to county councils, it's what I talk about, the benefits of being able to plan. And we've talked about the need for stability and not having to come back. And when we're not focusing on bonding, then we're focusing on educational programs, right? There's only a limited number of people in our district. And when they don't have to come every year and have the same meeting, those resources are freed up as well.
That's really interesting. And that, and that's the upper limit, right, or the, that's the total authority. You could still let those bonds over a period of time. You wouldn't have to dump them all on the market. So, now you have a hundred and thirty-five, whatever, authority. You could let it over, when, when it suited you for bond purposes or fiscal purposes. Okay. Further questions?
Just last I read, to share that on our website as well, we are going to, we dumped our information to Tableau and we're going to come up so anyone can track, not only our earthquake damage schools, but we're going to convert our bonds and spending too, so that folks can track on a Tableau their bond money, what's been done, how much is expended, whether it's over or under. So this is to come, I'm going to have it ready by next month, sorry.
President Marson.
Just one thing, having been on the Capital Improvement Committee, you know, this CIP is kind of a working document, and when we talk about Greening and Eagle River, we really don't know if we're going to rebuild those or not. And so we might say it's seven years out, but it could be next year that we'll be looking for those funds to rebuild that school because we don't want to wait seven years to do that. So it's kind of a working document, and anytime we put a bond out there, let's say for five years, we have to say what that bond money's going to be used for, and in our district, things change all the time.
Further questions or comments? If not, is there presentation on shared services or discussion of what's next on shared services?
That was requested by Ms. Kelly, that was the Chair.
Yeah, I think we just like it as a continuing item, even if there's no news to keep the pressure up or get a report. Are we doing anything new on shared services?
Pretty much new, but the system will be able to place our work, so the quick update that the Chair, please provide, Bill Fossey, the main school manager, we're doing shared services arrangements in at least four areas of general government, and I'll highlight them. So Solidway Services is using the school district for facility and small improvement projects, and they absolutely love it, they could order more of it, they'd order more of it. The Port likewise is not doing a ton of work, it probably do four hundred, fifteen hundred bucks here or there, but they have really benefited from being able to take the school district's licensed plumbers and electricians that they otherwise had to go out to the market for. They said earthquake has sort of slowed that down a bit, but they too started off very skeptically, were forced into it, but now they absolutely love it. We have an arrangement with Maintenance Operations where we're doing some of their heavy equipment work, but we haven't seen a lot of that lately, so there's not much to work there. The other one that was a big integration was the Risk Departments. We are merging our backend office functions, we have some claims management software that we're putting together. We were thinking we were going to go out to the market for insurance policies this year, it turns out there may be some wrinkle where one of the carriers that was likely to pick us up might not want to underwrite school districts across the board anymore, so that means cuddle that a little bit. But we're working very closely together, we've been working together on FEMA reimbursements, and so far, so good. I think where we have been able to knock a hole into the universe, do a little bit of the shared services stuff, it has proved useful. So continuing to explore and we'll let you know if there's more changes or questions.
It continues to seem like it would work for our parks, where we have a lot of parks, people in the summer, and to do the relatively small school facilities, ballfields, where they have a group that does them, but it's never a core function and it's not, and so the analogy I use is when our people are going from Valley of the Moon to the park strip, they can just hit Central and Chugatch, and we have some sort of shared agreement there. But I'm sure there, I'm sure it's more complicated than that, but it has always seemed like that would be, and it's the first thing you guys look at cutting, I mean, which makes sense, you would, you know, that's a kind of obvious cut each year, yet you don't want the facilities to look horrible. President Marson.
So, of course, it looks great when we tell the community that we're doing shared services, but I really think we have to put some numbers with that and say, "What are we saving? How is this helping the city? How is it helping the school district?" I mean, it's great we say that, people like to see it, but I think we need to have a little more meat to it and describe how it is helping financially.
Mr. Bishop.
I appreciate all those efforts, and it really makes sense. Thirty years ago, I was on the Assembly trying to do some analysis of only having one bus system in the city. Kansas had that one at the time, and there was plus and minuses, but at some point here, you know, there ought to be at least a discussion about that. And there's problems, but there was real benefits as well.
On that point, are we, do East students still have, or does everybody have?
All high school students.
All high school students have it? Do we have any indication that it's riding, it's plateaued, that the people that are going to use it are going to use it, or is it growing?
The early signals that I've received from the bus system, from people mover, is
that we renegotiated it. So previously it was a smaller number of schools, now it's across the board. They're loving it. The membership numbers for the new system are now going up absolutely, and we think a good part of that is actually getting school district into the system, which has a lot of long-term benefit for the health of people mover. I'm trying to get to those numbers, I don't have them here today.
Just fuller buses and safety-ish and just all that?
That's right.
But just to follow up quickly, if I may, I'm thinking on John's idea here, if we as a policy as a city decide we want to do all we can to hold the school district harmless, transferring the bus transportation responsibility to the city would be one, the city takes a significant hit on it, but if we decided that we wanted to redistribute the pain based on some criteria, I just think that ought to be one of the things to consider.
Member Wimhoff.
I love that out-of-the-box thinking about sharing this source. I mean, I think it would be fantastic out in Chugatch Eagle River, where there are long distances and most of our older kids drive because they can't ride the bus, and I think that some of the after-school activities situations that we have, keeping kids involved with transportation issues, but I just absolutely would look forward to that whole situation expanding with what-ifs and what can we do's. It could save money somewhere, but in the bigger picture, it could serve our kids and our people.
Mr. Trainey, you haven't said anything.
Superintendent, at one time we looked at having the kids use the people mover system, and there was some prohibition because of federal transportation dollars for the kids that we, that you guys have to run your portion of it, couldn't just use our bus system.
Our transportation money comes from the state, so what is the federal?
Our transportation money does come from the state. The discussion that we had in a couple budget advisory committees is to using city buses was more on the numbers of routes that we have, and Tom can talk more to that, and the current city routes don't cover those areas. You get DOT funding for your buses, which means you can't have them just be dedicated for students, they have to be allowed for the whole community. So that was, that was a long, many long discussions about how do you know that you could get all the kids there in a timely manner when you can't guarantee that the bus is just for students.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, you're in, so sorry, I lost track, Mr. Dunbar, Miss LaFrance, and then Miss Wimhoff.
I stepped out for a minute, so I apologize if somebody already brought this up, but I assume that there are pretty significant costs to the school district from AWU and Solidway Services, which we also have some control over, and if we're looking for ways to try to hold the city, the municipality, sorry, the school district harmless, are there ways we could subsidize using the two utilities? Would we have to go to the RCA, or could we take a write-down in our Musa Misa, for example? And this is for you and for Mr. Fossey.
To the Chair, you would have to go to the RCA for AWU. To the extent that we're doing collections through Solidway Services, that's not regulated by the RCA, so there are more things you could do there, but most of the schools are outside of that Solidway Services collection area. So it would be difficult to get something through the RCA that's only going to feed the school differently, I suspect.
Well, they're outside of our service area, but they still use our landfill, right? So I mean, it ends up, at some point, they must pay, maybe through Alaska Way, so wherever they must be paying us to use the landfill. I mean, I'm just wondering if there's some way we could, because again, we're thinking about things that are under the tax cap, right? Musa Misa is under the tax cap. If we can't go above the tax cap and we're trying to hold this school district harmless, is there a way that we could, I mean, it would require us to make cuts, but is that something we could attach with targets?
In addition, we just, we have, on top of things back there, but it goes back to the same state provision in regard to the allowable. We have to get permission for lieu of taxes provision, and if that happened, they would take the money right out of the local contribution again. So that would, we...
Someone would take credit for what you said.
If you provided utilities, they would do that again. Utilities is specifically spelled in the mo taxes permit.
We're trying.
Thank you. Do you have some...
This is my follow-up on the shared services. We're continuing to explore all these opportunities, I think putting some of these services together is a heavy lift. I just want to manage some expectations, though. Even when we're able to pull off these shared services agreements, I don't suspect we're going to be able to find millions of dollars to save. Because when you're at Central High School or Valley of the Moon, the same amount of grass has to get cut, and nobody has gardener who's pulling their thumbs, nothing to do. So we're getting a little bit of efficiencies where maybe you don't have to drive as far, we may be shaving some management positions, but most of the bodies remain, the most of all work remains. So we'll find them, but it's not going to be a solution to a hundred-million-dollar budget.
Right, and to be realistic, we did make some reductions, and when we joined shared services and we were grieved in some of those reductions, and we had to put those positions back, we lost those grievances.
This one.
Thank you. I have a rough time letting go of the buses. So I'm thinking of Chugiac Eagle River, and I'm thinking of this situation where due to a disaster, we had to relocate students and teachers, and from basically one side of Eagle River to the other. It's not like we're just going Chugiac to Mir Lake, we're actually going through the down-down section or up and over. Wow, it's like a bus route. And I just think that we should experiment, there might even be, I mean, is there emergency funding for devising emergency transportation? And the reason I'm saying this is I think sometimes when you try to solve the problem for one thing, you actually are solving the problem for an entire community. And I'm just wondering if perhaps talking with your bus planners and the people mover planners to just get a conversation started about, gosh, what's out there? Is there some funding or some grants available for emergency transportation for this situation that doesn't cross over our funding barriers? So I just wanted to throw that out there. Please don't throw out that concept that there still might be ways to help our community out there.
Appreciate that. Can we move on to testing? I put that on, and we're running out of time, but what I'd like to put forward to the school board, Assembly as well, is that to the extent you, the administration of the school board, feel like there are federally or state mandated tests that you don't think are the appropriate ones, that you have too many, but are doing because it's a federal or state requirement, I would urge you to stop and to, I will work with you, and I think other members from the conversation will work with you, to either get the federal government or the state government to give you an exemption or let you out of it. My sense is that we have too much testing and it's not as productive as we'd like. So I'd love you to have, and it's beyond my pay grade, but you know, the tests that are relevant to you, that have comparison ability to other places, that are real in terms of education, whatever it is, I trust you guys to make that decision, and if you're doing a test because the feds or the state told you to, I think it would be a great, I think it's not as mandatory as we may think. That is, I think it would be, and you might start a revolution to say, "We're going to stop doing that and have our congressional delegation or our Juno delegation defend your right to say that." And we don't have enough time and we've got other problems to be doing tests you guys don't think are appropriate. So if you figure that out, again, I don't know it, I would love to be part of saying, "We're not doing that test anymore, and we still want whatever money they used as a hammer, and we dare you to do anything about it." Mr. Trainey.
Eric, sounds like a good idea, we just need to make sure there's not federal ties, because the feds are really good for setting up a program, but they have all these little strings attached to it, to make sure we're not going to kill off another program, because we don't want to do the testing, because that's what the feds do.
Mr. Dyson and I, I think Cinder Halford, a couple others, did that on federal highway funds on some aspect of losing your hunting license, I forget what it was, but it was for a while, it was Alaska and Arizona that were saying no, and they didn't know what to do about it, and then they did waivers for a while, and then they just ended the requirement. So at least in that instance, we were able to call their bluff and back them down. Mr. Dyson.
Mr. Fossey, exactly right. The history is that local jurisdictions generally defy the federal law, particularly if it has a rational basis, if there's been no federal enforcement going after it to get people. Now, before we leave here, I hope that the school district is walking away with an action item from my first suggestion on the local contribution. I'm looking for you guys to say yes or no, pursue that. If you say yes, then I want your suggestion to make it better, and I will file it with Assembly. If you don't say yes, nothing happens, okay?
Mr. Hall.
And I want to emphasize from the outset, I'm speaking just for myself, but one area that I think we could make progress on is not having a quote standardized test that's unique to Alaska. And that came down from the state for various reasons, they did not want to use other tests that were suitable, that could be bought off the shelf, that are used in other states. And we've had a really poor track record with it. A company that literally couldn't support keeping the test up during the testing phase. And so as a result, we have no longer had a, on our students, that means anything to anybody else. The state could be encouraged to use something that's being used in other states, it would be cheaper, and it would be more meaningful to parents, it would be more meaningful to students. And if you're talking, if you're talking to legislators, asking why they came up with this idea, I'm not totally sure the legislature did it itself, I think this was under the Burnell administration, but they, for whatever reason, they did not want to use some of the standardized tests that were utilized in other states, but we could. But the saying of having to work with a very small population on a test, it's difficult to administer, and then we really don't have a good comparison to other states as a place where we could save some money.
And, I mean, there are two, you can ask nicely, as he's talking about, and probably that's the correct strategy on the cap, you just have to. I'm proposing the opposite strategy to this, we just stop doing it, and say, "What are you going to do about it?" So that, yeah, a little different.
There is a rest for one. Finishing.
That's it. We're almost done, and we're almost done the agenda, so that works. What, Dr. Bishop, will be the impact if the UAA School of Education either doesn't get its accreditation back or is cut for budgetary reasons?
Well, the accreditation, and I sat for a while on the Regents Board.
Yes.
This symbol, probably, my thought is that they'll probably run UAA similar to how they run the School of the Health, that you can attend and get a nursing degree and never step foot off of the UAF campus, but when you graduate, your degree says UAA, because the administrative, the administration of the whole health certificate in the state of Alaska is run through administratively through the offices at UAA, but you can go to school in fair mix. My understanding is that's what they're looking at, that that's, that the students in the program now will run under, they'll have one and they'll run under, actually they're looking at UAF being that. The problem is, is that right now, the requirements for both of those programs are different. So they'll have, if students here were in their freshman sophomore or junior classes, the courses there are articulated differently, which was, I mean, six years ago, the Regents said, "You need to get your courses aligned, why are they different if I go to individual schools?" And it's really that each of these universities really is an independent unit. So I foresee, I do not think the people in the system right now are going to have problems, they're moving people through the thirtieth. I know the Commissioner is working on some ways with the President to be able to, the people in the middle, really, so the very beginning folks are going to be fine because they're in general education requirements. It's really the people who are juniors right now, and they're working on a plan, my understanding is, to help them. But we're open to, you know, supporting and understanding, you know, if there's not a direct path, but certainly the high-quality educators is what we're seeking, so we would, you know, leave that to universities to accredit them. But I don't think that the accreditation is going to necessarily impact our students, and we're willing to help, we've already, all of our student teachers, we've already communicated with about when their finish date is, how we can help them. So on our ground level, we're... So on our ground level, we're working on it, but at the university level, it's really in alignment. And I want you to know, we spend, we have to get all of our high schools accredited, all of our programs, every CTE program is accredited, every high school, at the ID, the Project League, all those are an outside person looking in to see if you deserve it. So that, I mean, honestly, just so you know, this is a part of our program, 2K12, and we spend lots of money on it as well. So we, we're really familiar with it, and we just know what it takes to get there, but I don't, I think the students who are juniors might have a little rough time, but we're going to help them through. You know, there are students, our students coming through, we're going to see what we can do to assist them.
Appreciate that. And I skipped past, but approving the minutes of the last meeting, we have bigger things to do, but is there any changes or objection to the minutes of the last meeting Friday, December 14? Can I just get a motion to approve those minutes? Any objections? So we've done that, any other Assembly or School Board comments of a general or wrap-up nature?
I would just like to say, on the assessment, I just kind of have my head on it a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
I'm working on a kind of a, talking about going underground, I'm in this underground, I'm trying to, and I think we have some traction on it, to use an assessment we already use, that teacher's value, which is called the Measures of Academic Progress, which is, you know, it's on the computer, it's adjusted for kids, that they're working on having it be able to be a statewide test. It's dynamic where it changes according to what a kid does, they need grade level equivalents as well. It's been done in, until then, one of the Dakotas, we're the next state to possibly do it. I've been working with a group at the state level that might push for that, so then you can get rid of the, "Let me sit down for three days and this is everything I need," because that is given over a series of, three times a year, it looks at growth. It's actually something used by teachers and kids and parents, they like it.
So it's both an assessment and a teaching tool?
Correct.
They're often distinct, right?
Yep, it's used to say, "Where are my kids and where do I next need to go?" And so we're, that is in the works, I think they just didn't bring it out in the public because they thought people would go crazy that you keep changing their path. But there is a bright light in the future, hopefully.
We'd love to participate in the rebellion with you. If there's nothing further, we have a, the two meetings that follow for us are downstairs, so a little time to get there. Concluding comments? Is there any audience participation? Seeing, Mr. Haberman, we missed you the other day. Take us out, Mr. Haberman.
My name is Eugene Croft, head of the National Valley, follow the public process, the public process is inappropriate, decision made by the governing body is more likely to public interest. I'm continuing to be amazed that such a meeting, you face, continue to face reality. There is a state budget crisis. Over the last few years, the state has dipped into the rainy day accounts at $3, $4 billion a year. You still have face reality. And also, you're not looking beyond, and beyond is this issue. What will be the property, real property taxes out there, available? Is it going to stay the same, or is it going to drop substantially? So you're betting that values of property taxes out there is going to stay the same, but it's not going to drop, and are a model of the 1980s. Now, two issues that raise concern on the property taxes is, number one, the earthquake. The effect of the earthquake in question is the value of property, property taxes again. The second thing is, the cause of that, the public markets are all saying is, can you sell property? What, are they on high-risk areas, and all that kind of scenario. So everyone's being quiet right now and not addressing that. But furthermore, whatever this, we're moving in a situation where I'm here in Congress, I'm going to lead the state, I'm going to lead the state. And remind you of the excess that happened in the eighties, massive excess in the state, and what that did with property taxes and what was available. So you basically keep on raising the idea that it's not going to go drop, and you're not acting conservatively, it's not business as usual. And the big difference in the eighties and now is, we didn't have a rainy day account of several billion dollars to tap into like we had the last few years. And we had the opportunity, and the last piece of my remarks is this. The next ninety days of legislature, state legislature, you know, we don't know what they're going to do. But the key thing is, question is, is if we don't know what they're going to do, and you keep on claiming it's not facing reality, composed with his last remark, the fact is, I do not see the legislature united enough to override substantial vetoes of the governor.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman.
We can deal with that now, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Neese, really?
I can do it in 30 seconds.
Go, okay.
I encourage the Assembly and the School Board to look at the Ketchikan decision where three Supreme Court justices said, "Local required, local contribution is probably unconstitutional." Ketchikan asked the wrong question.
He did it, yeah, well-undered, yeah. Yes, seeing no other audience participation, we adjourn, thank you for coming by.